Okay, this January 8th, 2020 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board come to order. Happy New Year to everybody. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. So could I have somebody move to approve the agenda?
I'll motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Denise, is her second. Second by Brian. All in favor? Six in favor. Kenny cannot be here tonight, as I think all of you know, he's had a medical emergency that's preventing him. We want to wish him well. Public comment?
She's on her way to... She wants to get an endorsement from the Oyster River Alumni Association.
So I guess, you know, are you willing to delay public comment until Anita comes in?
I think when Anita comes in, if we let her speak, is that all right? Move ahead? Okay. Approval of the minutes, the regular minutes from December 18th. Denise?
I motion to approve the minutes.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Are there corrections?
Yes.
Denise?
Just one on page. I'm trying to see what page this is. Page three, under the superintendent's report, talking about, wait a minute, I just, I had it and I just lost it. It's when it talks about River Woods, it's listed here as River Bend, I believe. Oh, I just saw, oh yeah. So it's one, two, three, four, five paragraphs, no, four paragraphs into the superintendent's report. It says Jim plans to meet at River Bend. It should be River Woods.
Are there other corrections? Okay, with that correction, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I apologize. I was focused on the mini one. I actually do have another.
Okay, go ahead.
If I may, I'm sorry. So I also, under my comments on, when we were talking about the options, option one, that would be on page four, and it talks about Tom was agreeable to option one, then Brian, it says Denise, I completely agree with option one. I would like to add what I, my statement that she stated that she is concerned, and I do have this one day, I have it written down. She stated that she is concerned that if the bond does not pass, that any cuts will present more of a problem in 21, 22's budget, assuming the board will presumably try again to pass a bond and cost will increase.
Okay, with other changes? No? So with those changes, all in favor, please raise your hands. Six in favor. The minutes are approved. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district? No? Announcements, commendations, and comments from the board? No? Okay. District reports?
Good evening. I just have one thing. The deadline for sabbatical applications for staff is next Wednesday, and so that means the process for screening and reviewing sabbatical leaves will take place starting after that. It's unfortunate Kenny's not here today, but he has been the school board rep on the sabbatical committee. Hopefully he is able to do that. I'm not sure if he will be, but I do need to have a school board rep serve on that committee. So if Kenny's available to do it, I'd love to have him continue to do that, but if he's not, I would need a school board rep to review those sabbaticals.
So when would you need that person?
We will be, if it's not Kenny, we could wait until the next meeting to appoint somebody and then go from there.
Okay.
Which would be the 22nd, I believe, correct?
Yeah.
You have a meeting on the 22nd?
Yeah. It feels awkward to appoint Kenny while he's in the hospital.
Agreed.
Okay, so.
I think Kenny has enjoyed doing it, so.
I know, I know.
He's available, he'll want to do it, I just.
Well, we'll assume he's back the next meeting.
That's right. Okay, thanks.
Yep. Anita? Even though it's, even though public comment is passed, we decided for you, we would reserve a spot, so if you.
Tom, we need to also do the non-public.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hi. My name is Anita Mather. I'm a graduate of Oyster River High School, class of 1992. This is Deborah Savage-Rick Curran. She is graduate of Oyster River High School, class of 1982. We are here today representing the Oyster River Alumni Association. We're on, both on the Board of Directors. The Oyster River Alumni Association is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that supports alumni and current students of the Oyster River Cooperative School District. Our mission is to strengthen the Oyster River community by facilitating alumni networking and communication, providing funds to support current Oyster River students, and increasing awareness of current Oyster River issues. The ORAA Board of Directors is strongly in favor of constructing a new Oyster River Middle School building and has voted unanimously to endorse the passage of the proposed ORMS bond that will be on the March 10th, 2020 election ballot as warrant article number three. While the ORAA Board of Directors certainly does not claim to speak for all ORHS alumni on this matter, we feel that the increasingly substandard condition and layout of the current middle school building is not conducive to 21st century learning. The ORAA Board feels that the new OR, that a new ORMS building is the best option to support the needs of current and future generations of Oyster River students. We urge the Oyster River community to vote yes on warrant article number three in the March 10th, 2020 election, and I'm going to give a letter that also lists the name of all of the Alumni Association Board members. I'll just list them for you. Matt Smith, he's the president. ORHS 2004. Steve Vorgiotis, my husband, he's the vice president, 1991. Myself, 92. Bridgette Beegan, she's our secretary this year, 2009. Robin Galt, 1995. Ben Hardy, 1995. Christopher Gerard, 1993. Pranav Nanda, 2013. And Deborah Savage-Rick Curran, 1982. Thank you very much.
And thank you for all the support you've given to this, you know, it's been very, very useful for us.
We're very excited for the new building.
Thank you very much. I neglected to have a motion on the non-public minutes. I apologize. Could I have a motion to approve the non-public minutes? Denise?
I motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of December 18th.
Moved by Denise, second, second by Dan. All in favor? Six in favor, okay. So I'm sorry, moving back down, I think we're at the superintendent's report.
Just to let you know that we started off the 2020 school year with a middle school informational meeting at Dudley Dudley's house last night. It was probably a dozen, and of 10 of the dozen were seniors, and it was very well received. So I just, we continue to get up there.
Business administrator? No? We'll be having, you up to the podium later, I'm sure, Student Senate, there's no report. So I think we're ready to move to the budget. Essentially, I think we have to come up with one number tonight, which will be the number that would have, really one plan. We don't have to come up with a number, just one of these plans to approve. And so it seemed to me, like, I'm just trying to organize our options. It seems to me we have about six plans before us. And I'm wondering if I could just, maybe if I started just by going on what those six are?
Sure.
Is that all right? And then I would like to follow by having Jim, because he hasn't spoken about the plan that he developed, right? You know, and if you could maybe speak to, speak to why you would support, or why that's, you see that as a feasible plan. Is that possible? Okay, so, so what I wanted to make sure was that none of the options that had been on the table, since people, you know, we hadn't taken them off, so we can, we can take them off tonight, we'll have to, but I, just so that we have a starting point. So, and so if we give each one a number, so option one, okay, will be the increase of 4.14%. Does everyone have that?
That's the original option one, isn't it?
That's the original option one, okay? The original option two is for using $100,000 of the bond interest, okay? Now, option three, I'm not sure if we have it in our pack, but the original option three used $150,000 in trust fund money and $100,000 in interest to get to the 3.5%. So we all clear on that one? Okay, that would be three. Four is the proposal that Michael brought before us last meeting, which brings us also down to 3.5% through a series of reductions and some additions, and using the interest on the bond. So we all clear on four?
So that, that four then is not the same as option four in the papers that we're here tonight?
I'd like to make, have that one be option four the way I've stated. Is that all right?
Okay.
Okay. Option five is the one I'm going to ask Jim to speak to in just a second, which is his kind of another alternative that gets to the same point that Michael's does. And option six would be delaying, essentially delaying the grandstand and taking money from the trust fund, okay, which also gets us to the 3.5%, okay? So Jim, I'm wondering if you could come forward and, so are we all clear on the six? Do you have the numbers straight?
So, if I can just.
Sure, sure.
Michael's proposal is out, is now option four.
Four, yeah.
And then everything else moves up one. Okay.
Is that all right? Okay. Jim, would you, thank, thank you for being here.
So this is, this is three. Now, that's six. They all go up.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Basically, what we did after the last meeting, and we went through Michael's suggested reductions, and again, I'm only here just to talk about capital stuff and reasoning behind it. So I'll just kind of go down the list. There's like four major things here. First one being the furnishings and fixtures for the high school and the furniture line. $50,000 represents what we're going to allocate towards cafeteria, chair replacement, and a couple of tables. Instead of just doing half and half, we felt it wise just to go all or nothing approach on this one. I talked with Suzanne, it is what it is, and we're still going to, in the meantime, look for that, that furniture and, and look for other years where we can do it with end-of-the-year money. The energy, even though those are suggested percentages for increases, I get it. Energy, still, we're kind of sticking to our guns with being very conservative on that. It's the one that is most wild out of my operating budget, and I did find, or I feel comfortable with 10,000 of that 30 recommended to go down. Couple of reasonings behind that is propane. Propane, for the past couple of years, we've actually have, have been around hovering about a dollar, $1.10 per gallon, which is absolutely phenomenal. Again, that could go up at any time. Just four years ago, that was about double. And if you look at the past five years, you'll see some of those changes, again, depending on weather. So that was a little bit more reasoning on the energy. I'd be happy to expand a little bit more, but I figured with 10,000, that would be enough.
Okay.
I think in Dr. Morse's letter about the grandstands in particular, every time I got up here, every informational piece that I heard from the board, though not all of you, it seemed to be against that project, at least at the time being. So that's, we agree with that being taken out for now, and we can address it in, in future years. Even though I dug my heels in a little bit on the gym floor, high school, sand and refinish, what I'm going to do, I still would like to do that project and use my contracted services count in my operating budget. And even though it's not the full amount that I have designated for that project, I did, in the notes section, budget for Moheramit and Mastway Elementary School gym floors to be repainted. After I wrote the budget, the operating budget with that note in there to redo those floors, I had another contractor come out and look, and he said, yes, you're at, at that age where you should be repainting those floors. However, your floors have held up very, very well. I don't recommend you spending the money doing that now. So essentially, I like to take those funds that I already designated for those two schools and do the high school gym floor painting and re-sanding.
Okay.
The only other change in here, again, contrary to Michael's option four, was the planning for the Mastway and Moheramit HVAC. Again, as facilities director and looking in future years, I don't think we're going to have much of a project year next year or the years to come. So to put money towards HVAC engineering at this point, as technology evolves, I'd feel comfortable stalling on that until we're a year before that being actually a serious project that we want to do. So that's my reasoning in that. And I know there was some strong feelings about the AC cafeteria for the high school. Again, we fell on, well, we have never had AC in that cafeteria. Let's address it in future years and, and avoid taking money out of the trust fund. It seemed that those two were, was actually the discussion, at least in my head. I can't speak for everybody, but I feel comfortable with, with the recommendations in option five.
Okay. Questions? Questions for Jim?
Just, what I'm hearing isn't what we have on our paper.
It shouldn't be.
This is what's called option four. What Jim is describing is called option four on this page that was in the.
Right, but you're talking, I'm not seeing, for example, where it talks about the cut for Moheramit HVAC, because I'm still seeing it on here.
For Michael.
He added it.
I, I added it. It was not.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa.
I swapped.
Okay, okay, got it, got it, got it.
That in, in place of the grandstands.
Okay, got it.
So that's.
Okay, got it. Now I'm following, because I.
So the big thing, the change between Michael's and option five now, is that option five doesn't use any of the interest money, and it doesn't use any of the funds from our trust fund. So it's strictly using within the budget.
Yeah.
It's strictly a capital cut.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Denise?
All right. I don't have questions. I just have comments. If anybody has questions.
Well, this is one, one other point I'd like to get out front, that it was confusing last time whether, if we did use, for example, in Michael's, if we did use interest from the revenue and the bond, whether that would necessitate a warrant article, okay? Could Sue, maybe just explain that, get that piece of information out front?
It does not if you're not going to spend it. So it was my mistake when I presented it to DRA. They assumed that we wanted to spend that money, but if you're using it as a revenue, you don't have to ask to use that as a revenue. Because remember, we estimate our revenues on that in the colored sheet. If you want to use one of those as an estimate, you can, but you don't have to ask voters for that. If you want to spend any of that interest money, you have to ask permission to spend that, and you need three fifths vote.
Okay. So your understanding is we do not have.
We do not, and I actually called our attorney.
None of the options would we have to have a warrant.
Right, we would not. If we're going to use that to offset.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Sure, sure.
So do I understand from, from, that also we cannot use that, even though it's sitting in the account with the bond funds, we also cannot use that for the middle school project because it's.
Correct.
Over and above that, or?
Right, you can't use it for anything unless.
So it just sits there until the end of the project?
Yep.
And that becomes general revenue?
Right, it goes, it's to the general fund.
Okay, so we're looking like two years out, it would just show up as fund balance, essentially.
And we'll know what it is, too.
Right, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Can you go ahead, Denise?
So I'm, I still have the same concerns that I expressed at the last board meeting, which is, if the bond does not pass, what does that do to our budget next year when we're, we're trying to come up with 21, 2021, 2022 budget, and we've deferred expenses, assuming the bond is passing, and the bond doesn't pass, and we've deferred these expenses, and now we're faced with the same, you know, we're back at square one, trying to get, pass a bond, and we're back at square one. So, but, one of the options, when I was, I kind of had a conversation with Tom, and what it pointed out to me, and it makes sense, is that an option two utilizes that 100,000 of bond interest. If the bond doesn't pass, we don't have to worry about it, because the bond's not there. So I could go with option two, because it's sort of, you know, if the bond does pass, okay, that's fine, we can do that. But if it doesn't pass, then we don't have that issue of having cut some of our projects, and then, you know, oh, we're faced in this situation. We've deferred these items, and now we're going to have to defer them even further, assuming that we're coming back next year to try and pass a bond. So I'm really not in favor of cutting things. I suppose I could go with that, you know, the estimate on the energy increase, because that's not really, you know, I mean, that's just an estimate. So something like that I could go for, but definitely not the buses. Like, I really think it's just a mistake to defer a bus. And again, next year, we're going to have to probably buy that bus. And so anyway, that's, that's my feeling about the situation, is I really don't think it's prudent to postpone any of these, if, you know, to, to be able to plan for that. Hopefully, not what we're going to have to face, but you never know.
Let's just hear the other board.
I mean, I, I, I mean, the thing is, you know, there's, it's a really big ask between the two warrants that are on there. Between the budget and between the middle school, it's, you're closing in on $100 million that you're asking. And it's like, when you do a budget, you don't get everything you want, unfortunately. There's always some hard choices, and I keep hearing about next year, there'll be many hard choices to make next year, many. So it's, to me, when I look at it, what we've said over and over again is, particularly, there's this multi-year plan that you're working on. And I think it's not particularly wise to not make your first year of your plan as you go into a multi-year plan. And so, as I look at what Michael did and how it's come out at option five, I think that's the clear way you want to go in. It's like, you're going to go to the voters, you have a clear justification. All three towns, by the way, come in. We make our budget goal, and in terms of the tax impact of all three towns, it really is positive going in. We haven't touched the interest, we haven't touched the trust funds, and it allows you to make it. So again, while it would be great, since we did the athletic fields, to have the bleachers, that, that's a luxury. It, it would be nice to have it, but would, you're asking for a $50 million building on top of that. So it's like, I, I would prefer, again, not to go to the voters, and I stood up there at the, at the deliberative session and talked about the budget. It's hard for me to explain to the voters why in a multi-year plan, we didn't make our first year, because we don't want to make tough decisions. So again, I keep hearing about next year, it will be tough next year, but, but that doesn't delay making the tough decisions this year. So for me, the clear option would be what's now option five.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you don't think that the voters would understand? We don't have to spend the money in the budget if the bond passes. We don't have to spend it. We can decide not to spend it. But you don't think the, the voters would understand that if the bond doesn't pass, again, what we're trying to do is not have a sudden increase. The bond doesn't pass, we're talking now about like a 2% increase, and we could have, we could have gone with a 3% increase and taken care of some of these needs. So you don't think the voters could understand?
No, I don't. And again, I, we specifically came up with a goal. I tried to do the goal, which was the apportionment, which was what we could control. This allows us to, to meet our budget goal. It doesn't cause significant damage to, to students. Every budget you do, you have to make tough choices. These are the tough choices we're making. Would I like to have the bleachers? Yeah. But I, it's, I think it's more important for the trust of the voters to show that we made our budget goal, that we're adhering to a plan, because not making it the first year just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Again, that's just my personal opinion.
Okay. Michael?
On, on that subject specifically, I would, I would rather go all in on the bond this year, be able to go to the voters unambiguously saying, we did what we said we would do, what we said we were going to do in terms of what, what the impact of the middle school project is going to be. And, and there are other, certainly there are other uncertainties in future years, but I think we can address those in, in future years. We're also taking a conservative approach when it comes to preserving our, our trust fund assets, that we have that flexibility if we need to access it, if something doesn't go the way we, we hoped that it was. I also, I think that as we've looked at the budget through the process this year, one of the things I've been concerned about in the past is that we had treated the, the capital account as kind of a, a wild card. It was, it was, we were initially just adjusting that number without necessarily talking about what was being adjusted there. So I, I really do appreciate the critical look at the operating budget as well as the capital account in getting to this, in getting to this number.
And just, I want to thank you for just, you know, causing us to re, to re-enter this. I think you, you caused us to rethink this, and I really appreciate that.
And I, I recognize the, the amount of time that the board had to look at that proposal, and that administration was not what it needed to be. I appreciate the flexibility of bringing this discussion out to this week.
Okay. Others?
If we go this way, without utilizing the bond interest, the confusing warrant article about the bond interest goes away completely.
Completely.
So that, which was article four in the, in the draft that we're looking at later.
Exactly. We won't need it. Okay.
It'd also be nice not to have to try to explain that one.
Yeah, that's a good, good not to have to explain that. Dan, you have ideas, or?
Yeah, so I think Al summed it up well. I, I think it's, it's a, I guess my biggest concern is it's a, it's a pretty bad luck going, going to the community with such a massive ask. And, you know, I think we have to, I think we have to hit our goal. So I think this, and, and, you know, I, I take Denise's point, there's risk in that, obviously. But, you know, I think this is a good balance. I think it's responsible. I, I like that, you know, we're not touching the trust fund and we're not counting on the revenue right away, and so I can, I can be comfortable with five. It is still five, right?
Yeah.
For now.
Denise, five.
I can, I can, I can live with five.
Can, can I do?
I can stomach that one.
Okay, Denise, your turn.
Could we just possibly consider putting the bus back in and not deferring that third bus?
So Lisa's not here, as Jim was, and we had pretty extensive discussion about the buses. And I just want to point out that, as Michael pointed out last time, we would have been two years ahead of our own plan. But the, the issue that's really important here is, one of the buses that needs to be replaced is already off the road. We're using an older substitute bus to substitute for a bus that we're going to get rid of. And then the other bus that's, that is in, in the budget, is a bus that is in great need of, of maintenance during its operational run. You know, in other words, it's, it's costing us more to run it. It's safe, and it'll get us through the school year. So the proposal under option, the new option five, is that we would get the two buses we absolutely need and delay the third bus until the 21, 22 school year, Denise. So I am super comfortable saying to you tonight that the two of the three buses are definitely needed, and we can defer the third bus.
So I'm wondering, just, my sense is that there is support for option five. So I'm wondering if I, we can have a motion to endorse option five? Brian?
I'll make a motion to go with option five, as noted.
Okay. And that, just say that's 3.5%, no trust fund, 18,000 from the one bus, minus 50,000 on furn, fixtures.
10,000.
Minus 10,000 on energy, minus 160,000 on the, the grandstand, and minus 27,000 on Jim sanding and painting.
For a total of 265.
For a total of 265. Okay, moved by Brian, second.
I'll second.
Dan? Further discussion, questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor, all opposed, one opposed, so that motion passes. So we have the information now, I think, Sue, that you can go ahead for next week, right?
Right, correct. We will go and change the warrant, because the warrant, as written, has option four on there, so we'll change that number.
Okay.
And I think we're good.
Can I, can I just add one other thing, Tom?
Sure.
So I anticipated that we would be at 3.5% tonight, because that seemed to be where the board was consensus-wise. So I wrote the article for the Friday update and the eCrier and so forth yesterday and today. And one of the things that I, I want to be clear in terms of the board's goal, and Al said it tonight, the goal the board made was about apportionment, not total growth of the budget. So when you, when you see my article tomorrow, it'll say the total growth of the budget was 2.8%, thereabouts. It's not. It's not 3.5%. So the reason I wanted to say that is because if you all looked at that tomorrow, and you were to think, what is he thinking about? We just passed a 3.5% budget. You passed a 2.8%, 8.3% budget. Total growth in the operating budget is point, well, as of today, it was .29. So 1.34% of the growth is the teacher contract, and 1.34% of the growth is the bond. So going back to the, what Michael said, we really emphasize the bond, which is exactly what we intended to do. I understand Denise's concerns, but for me, as a superintendent, the recommendation to go super conservative this year is, is the way to go, because we're going to have to be super conservative for the next couple of school years. And so I think it, it's respectful of the taxpayers. Again, we do, there's no compromise in terms of what we're doing for student programming here. So I want to make sure people understand that.
So thanks to Jim and Sue and Lisa for vetting those numbers and coming up with the alternative, but good work. So Sue, so I guess we have to.
There isn't anything else that you need to change or revise, unless you have any questions? I just put that out there, because the default budget, we talked about that.
Uh-huh.
You're all set with that?
Mm-hmm.
That will be presented at the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
I'll bring it back to you after the public hearing for signatures.
Uh-huh.
Same thing with warrants.
So just in terms of the public hearing next week, Tom will open the board meeting like he always does. We'll have a public hearing on the middle school bond, and he'll close that. Then we'll have a public hearing on the budget, then he'll close that, and then they'll ask for action of the board next week. And then, once you've taken action, we can have all the documents ready for your signature at the following board meeting. So that's the plan for next week.
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
So we all set?
All set, if you're all set. Thank you.
Assignment of the warrant articles, I would like to recommend that Brian present warrant article three, which is the new middle school. And I think working with Dr. Morse and working with Ron Lamar, just because, you know, you know, figure out how you're going to coordinate that, you know, get together, because it may not be just you. I would think probably, certainly want to have Ron as part of that. And I would think he has the videos, the, I think he'll have all three of, three of the, of the kind of walkthroughs.
He may have one on the gym and the auditorium. He's working on those as well.
Yeah, yeah. So you for three, the teacher contract, Dan?
Yes.
And I would like to do the budget. I haven't done that for a while, so I'm going to do the, so I'll make those, and then Denise to do the presentation for the volunteer award. So I'd like to make that as a motion, that these are the, this is the assignment.
Second.
Second by Brian. So we okay with that? All in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor. Okay, the presentations are set. Public hearing discussion, I don't know if we really have to talk about that tonight, is that?
Do we need to adopt the warrant articles?
I think, I think after the public.
After the.
After, okay, okay.
Okay.
Where were you?
I think we're at public hearing discussion, and I'm not, we talked.
That's what I just talked about.
Okay, you talked about that, okay. So motion to.
It says motion to approve the warrant here, though.
The maternity one? Yeah.
But.
The amounts to be put on the warrant, that's all I needed for that. So you already approved that option five, that's what I needed.
Was the numbers we were looking?
The numbers we need. And then actually, you approved removing article four. Correct, you don't want that on there. We just needed all of that, so we can prepare it for next week.
Okay, so we never approved article four anyways, right?
No, no, but I'm going to take it off.
Just take it off, yeah. So I'm just trying to think what more we have to do tonight.
You don't, I just want to make sure you're clear, so that for next week, when you're at your public hearing, we have everything ready.
Yeah.
And you won't vote on anything until after your public hearing.
Okay, and you'll, you'll calculate the amount based on option five that we've approved?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
All good, thank you.
Good, thank you. So I think we're down to motion to approve the, unless I'm missing something, or motion to approve the maternity leave? Brian?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Brian, second by Denise. Discussion, all in favor? Six in favor, that's approved. Denise, you want to talk about policies?
Okay. Um, there. Oops. Just a second, get to the right page. Okay, so we are, I'll make, if everybody's okay, I think we've, we've kind of talked about all of these last time, so I'll just motion, make a motion as a slate, to approve policy D3, time, time effort reporting, D4, conflict of interest, mandatory disclosure, D5, inventory management, equipment and supplies purchase with federal funds, DFA investment, DFE, gate receipts and admission, DJB, petty cash, and DBD, budget planning. And those are all for second read.
Okay. So they're all moved as a block? Is there a second? Brian? Discussion of these?
Can I just?
You want to pull?
Just because I, if we talked about it, I don't remember. The change to DFA on page, where are we? Fourth from the bottom, paragraph three, internal controls review. It had been reviewed periodically by school board and independent auditor. Not something we've done correctly traditionally, or are we removing, are we, are we removing that obligation of the board, or has it, as a practical matter, just been the independent auditor that's been doing it?
Independent auditor.
Okay. Has the board ever, I don't, I don't recall us.
Normally not. It's independent auditor. You rely on the independent auditor's report. It's a complex report and requires all kinds of federal and state guidelines that a typical board wouldn't.
And we, we get a report of the auditor, and, okay.
Yes, you guys get the report annually, and you get the management letters, and you get inefficiencies, all of that, it's presented to you by the independent auditor.
Thank you.
Okay. So are you ready to vote on these as a block? All those in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, the policies are approved. In favor. School board committee updates, manifests were reviewed by Brian and me. Are there other committee updates? Al?
Yeah, wellness, the big wellness committee met yesterday, and so there's like three subcommittees under the wellness committee. First one is, I'm going to call it the data collection, which has come up in here. So the data collection, they did the, it's, the sleep survey is what we call it, it's actually a wellness survey. And then, normally it's brought to the board on a yearly process. And so what the hangup has been, is everybody was super busy, and we were trying to incorporate with the sleep study, the homework study. And so the problem we've had is, okay, so we've continuously done the sleep study, but we did the homework study before we changed the schedule. So what we are recommending is a little bit of patience. In February, what we want to come back and, is to redo the homework study again. So we'll have the sleep study and the homework study before we made the changes, and the sleep study and the homework study after we made the change. And what we're really trying to see is, was it effective, or had we had any influence? So, so the thought is to put together in February the questions again, and reuse the, I think it was Survey Monkey, right, that we had, and put it out and collect it again, and then bring it back to the board. So I think it'll be much more useful if we do that. So that was the data part. The second one is a policy committee, subcommittee. And what they're really looking at is the wellness policy, and specifically, are people, parents and teachers aware of what the policy is, and are they in compliance with it? And so they're beginning to reach out and work to publicize it, and find out what the misconceptions are about wellness, and so they're working on that. And then the third one is actually the employee wellness committee, and we're meeting later in the month. And the employee wellness committee, what we are trying to do is work on stabilizing our healthcare costs. And so in the healthcare setup, there's a biometric screening that we, that employees can use, as well as a price shopper program. And we're trying to increase participation of employees in both those programs, so that the hope is that we can stabilize our rates. And again, that is meeting later this month, and that's wellness.
Other committee updates? No? Public comment? No? So we have the future meetings. We'll be meeting again in a week on the budget, budget and bond hearing, and then their next regular meeting for us will be on the 22nd, so.
And just in terms of the Durham Council, that's Monday, we're doing the budget, as we just presented it this evening. And then Madderberry and Lee are coming up later in the month. So we're doing another round of meetings with the elected officials.
So can I have a motion to go into non-public session for the purpose of, you know, the superintendent's evaluation?
Kenny's not here.
Kenny's not here.
You have to sign the right one here. I think it's, I can't see, is it right on the agenda, that it's what we're going for?
Is that one, it's, if you go under RSA 91, I'll make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-a colon three, and I believe it is one, which is promotional compensation disciplining of any public employee, unless that employee has the right to an open meeting. I think that's the right one, isn't it?
Yeah.
And, so that's the motion.
Okay, moved by Al.
Second.
Second by Michael. Roll call.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Okay, let's go.